Okay, well. Thank you everyone for being here for a joint meeting. We'll make this as brief, maybe brief and enjoyable as possible. Appreciate everybody showing up. Let's call the meeting to order. So on to our general discussion and perhaps to start, thank you for this handout here. Maybe we can start so we all get on the same page. Does that make sense?
If, does everybody have a copy? There's someone on the table running under the clock? Just to make sure. So this kind of whittles out on the one page, the multi-page capital plan and focuses just on the areas that were identified at this stage for bonding, looking out over the next five years. So it's looking at twenty-three through twenty-seven and then the remaining six through ten years aggregated together. For this year, the proposal as of right now is not to bond anything. So the first section, as you get down to total existing, that's the existing capital plan. And then the next section is potential new items. These are a number of larger items, some of which have been costed out, some of which are to be determined. As we look in the existing in twenty-three, one item was identified and I know this was tabled for the council meeting discussing the board of finance meeting tonight. Using the ARPA grant to move forward with at least substantial funding towards HVAC upgrades at Lillard School. Moving across on the existing, the next items that we're looking at are the town hall and library roofs. So replacing those, it's been a number of years. And over the last couple of years, we appropriated money to replace leaking roofs. Recall there's been a couple of those where we've done that. So we're trying to get ahead of that, especially because of the the damage and health matters that could happen at the library, the town hall, there's so much public going through really. Also nine hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is the fourth of the four vehicles that were identified on the fire department strategy plan. We've already got one that's doing either this month or next. Two more were ordered with savings, appropriation. So those are on order and this would be the fourth. Also, looking out at FY twenty-four, the idea would be to either do Griswold or Hubbard. It's not both, it's one or the other, but the determination would be there and that five million is a placeholder right now for each of those. Looking out a little bit further, there's the library community center chiller. Replacing that, doing work on paper goods pond dam. We call it the railroad pond dam work that's done a few years ago. This would be the other dam in town. Over the next two years from there, looking at the four buildings for Percival in East Berlin. As we go down, the senior center roof, that one's a little bit further out because obviously there's a big question mark as to whether we will be in that senior center, given the community senior center work that's undergoing right now. And then you start to get into the boilers and windows at the different schools. The high school's not on this list for work that was already done, obviously, the major renovation project. And then as we get out to twenty-eight plus, so in fact, five years. And those are kind of lumped together because looking at the next five years is enough of a challenge saying where you'd be in five plus years. There's obviously some unknowns out there. But we start to look again at resurrecting the fire vehicles in the next cycle of replacements during that period. As well as, you know, we're three years into Scolies. So by that point, we'll be in the neighborhood of thirteen years of having the turf, ten to fifteen year normal expected life. So Scolies will start to come back around. So that's sort of the existing, what we looked at from the existing capital plan. From a staff standpoint, we don't project out in the actual capital plan major new items like community center or new police station. Those are major endeavors that the town would need to have substantial input on. These are really the major capital bonded items, those identified for bonding of existing. So we got onto potential new, the police station renovations, the five point two million is off of the presentation that Brian Hughes did at the last council meeting. Along with that, it would move the board of ed storage area. And so there's a TBD as to what is the impact both board of ed to move and replace that storage area at another location. As well as potential town impact because it is projected to go into food pantry area downstairs. Well, community senior center, when we met, there was a lot of talk about thirty-six million was the number there and then discussion about that number potentially being closer to forty million as you get out to when the construction would happen. It split over two years because it's expected to take a period of time. And so the bonding would be roughly split evenly. That would be determined based on how we expect the project to progress. And then there's some other items that have been discussed, whether they would be approved. They're just on here for making awareness. One is discussion about clubhouse, either renovation or a new clubhouse at Timberland. Portable classrooms at Griswold. Roads, there's a street scan study that Mike is initiating and from that we'd be able to identify the roads that need considerable work. And there could be bonding requests from there. And then the town has thirty-seven bridges. A lot of work has been done. We are trying to roll bridges so that as we complete one and reimburse that money rolls to the next one. So we can avoid or at least minimize bonding. And that's why the TBD and the end of the year is out there. Kind of going down, the next section was trying to give everybody an impact based on the current grand list, one mill is two million four hundred thirty-eight thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars. So assuming if we borrow for every million dollars we borrow at a five percent interest rate. If you borrow it for ten years, it's worth about point zero five five million. So in other words, if you borrow ten million dollars, we have about a half a mil increase in isolation, obviously absent retiring other debt or anything else, but in isolation, that's what it is. Then the last piece at the bottom of the page is just pulled from the town charter. What is required if we do seek to bond five million dollars or more, there is an automatic referendum that needs to be held. The next two pages, the first one probably looks familiar. This is from the budget. And this looks at existing debt, no new borrowing, where will we be? The town has done a great job of paying down considerable debt over the last several years. And it's on track to be targeted as a forty million dollar ceiling. The forty million dollar ceiling is designed to get the town to a position where within an operating budget, about four percent of the operating budget would go to debt service. So that's where forty million is. And that's why it's considered to be sort of the ceiling. That's your sweet spot of where you ideally want to be at a peak. And the town is progressing there quite nicely. The other side, the next page looks at if these items, the existing and the new that have been quantified, were put in there. Where your numbers would fall. If we were to do this and borrow at the pace that you see outlined on the first page. It would peak out in twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-four. So the next budget cycle at just over a hundred twenty-five million dollars. And then we begin to come back down on the idea that we're going to continue to retire some of that debt. Naturally, your debt service would represent a pretty substantial amount of your budget at that point. It is trying to move the picture where debt load would be if everything on the front summary page was done. This is not a proposal to do those things, but at least an opportunity to kind of make everybody aware and start the conversation.
Oh, let's just bond it all. Yeah, that's, well, we have a lot of projects on hand. We've accomplished a lot of projects in the last few years. We have some important ones here, but we also have, you know, difficult times for everyone. Town today and the state and the country and the world, unfortunately, right? You know, very difficult time, know what's gonna happen next, unfortunately. World events, never mind the state or town events, but and hopefully we're past. I think you can say past COVID, the worst, but who knows? We thought this probably six months to a year ago. So, and the town has come through things very, you know, very well, I think, compared to a lot of places. We've done a good job. We funded a lot of projects and fixed a lot of roads, fixed a lot of bridges. We've, you know, given, I think, good increases to the board of ed, the town has been a little cheap with, I guess, but we brought the board of ed up to a nice point where they're right there if we look at charts and the people spending, they're higher than almost everybody in the surrounding area. I don't know if that this is a jury group or not, but the surrounding area we're at. I think there's blasting area that's a couple hundred bucks higher than us for people. Which is one of the measures that they use and that the state department of education. So, you know, you know, we speak and I think we'll see if we can work through some of these things. I mean, I think that, you know, local, local government is the one place that we could, you know, impact our our town, our residents, our people, our students, everyone in town, our seniors, you know, and really accomplish things, get things done. But also be responsible. We see, or I see certainly when I first took office. The debt was very high, dangerously high according to our credit, our, you know, auditors and not where it should be at, as you just mentioned, because it should be around forty million dollars to a hundred million dollar budget. And we're getting there, we're working through it and we've been responsible, but I don't think, not that there's more things that the town needs and wants, but we, I think, have done a pretty good job of funding most of the projects in town up to this point. Getting a lot done, buying vehicles, buying fire trucks, which were, you know, some of these things were legacy issues that were left and, you know, the trucks, we mean, I mean, total, I think, seven new trucks in total. So that was a big, a big expense, public safety, replaced the fire and the police radio, which were inoperable almost, which is the saddest thing I've ever heard from public safety, but so we've done a lot in the last few years and there's always more to do. There's always going to be more to do. We know that, but so we just have to figure this out. How to proceed responsibly. There's some important projects on here, certainly the school budget, you know, we've discussed that and I a little bit. If you wish, I think we should. The police department, very important, you know, obviously the police station got voted down a few years ago, right before I took office as the mayor and but we have some, I think, very good renovations that are on, have to be done and need to be done. And the price is a little bit higher than some of us thought, I think, but with the police accountability bill, there's some things that have to be done. She wrote in the PD that we've got to look at and do. And again, overall, compared to a new police station, that's pretty reasonable. The HVAC system, you know, that's been on tap for a long time, starting with Willard, I think, is what we talked about. And the other two, elementary schools, those have to be done, certainly in light of COVID. Probably makes it even more important to do that. Community senior center. That's coming, you know, we'll be talking about that as soon as the advisory group finishes up, hopefully in a month or so, get that to the council and we'll have some more discussion on that. Important for the community, there's options there though. That's a, you know, probably at least a forty million dollar bond right there alone, which would put us well over probably what we started with six years ago, which is not a good place to be, but you know, there are options there. The portable classrooms as tour of the schools the other a few weeks ago. You know, it was obvious those portable classrooms are past their useful life. We have to figure out what to do with those. You know, Mr. Benigni was, you know, he wasn't. I mean, he's concerned about it, but there's probably a way we could work around that and get rid of them or replace them or figure out some other things, but it is something we need to talk about. Obviously the roads and bridges. We found out we have, how many bridges? I didn't know. Thirty-seven bridges in borough, more than what, any town?
More than any around us. Cheshire's a little close.
Thirty-seven bridges, thirty-seven bridges to maintain.
I think Mike's visited everyone.
Yeah. That's true. That is true. So, you know, we know, but we can get that work done. We've been taking care of the roads. Capital, town hall, we've been upgrading things which need upgrading. So I, you know, we've been moving forward, which is great. And again, being responsible for, we've had two years of no tax increase for our residents, which I think is important to get through this COVID time and very difficult time for many people, many families. And it's only getting more difficult now. We're out of, hopefully we're out of COVID, I keep saying that. Hopefully we're out of COVID and now we have, you know, forty-year-old inflation like we've never had before. And then we'd love to see the, I don't know, every day go by, it's another five to ten cents on gallon of gas, which apparently has headed to five dollars pretty quickly, if you listen to the president with banning the Russian oil. Much of it, I guess it affects the whole world market. And so that you just expect more increases. So everybody's in a world of hurt, so to speak, financially, which includes a town, I'm sure, you know, the gas, although we lock in some prices, I think, right? With the gas or is that not, is that not hold? Who knows? See what happens?
Should we still play the market?
Yeah. Might have, might have. So we know some of that will go up, but I still think this year, myself, my personal opinion is if we could do it to do a very minimal tax increase, if no tax increase occurred, that would be great. I do think there's some room here to accomplish that myself. And I know the board of finance has a, there's a lot of work to do with that. And as does the council, as we follow along with what they do and what we think should be done. But I think, you know, with, you know, federal government with, I don't know how many trillion dollars they're in debt. They still want more tax money, the state, even though they claim we have a surplus, they're talking about additional taxes from what I've earned, which is amazing to me. But so the only place we can help our, our folks here is to do the best we can with our town budget and to watch their pockets the best we can, if possible, without, again, without hurting the town and going backward. We don't want to go backwards. So we're talking about the police department, we're talking about a new pension plan revisiting that and that's, that's important. I don't think that's going to hurt our finances too much from what, you know, a little bit, but it should be pretty revenue neutral, which you can qualify to a pension plan, but we still have to discuss that and we will, and we're studying that and it really becomes a retention problem. And recently, we certainly found out the hard way, it's an improvement problem. Right off the bat, right? We had, I think, a couple of rate chief, a couple of candidates, that was the first question from what I heard. That were very good candidates on the list and Rowan's lucky to have, we had a pretty good pool, but by the time we will were down, there's about ten or twelve people left out of what, two hundred and fifty? So, you know, two right off the bat left because of the pension. So that, that speaks volumes about what we need to do. All the towns around us have pensions. Most of the PDs in the state have pensions. Rocky Hill went back to a pension recently. And I think we're all competing for the same candidates and law enforcement, very difficult to recruit qualified people these days. People don't, you know, are obvious reasons and difficulties in the last few years, we've seen across the country, you know, not as aggressively applying for law enforcement jobs. So we have to be careful with that to keep our town safe, keep the police department as, you know, staff the best way we can. So so, you know, that's what I think. I think there's some ways we could work in this budget and get to that zero tax increase. It would be nice to do that for our residents. It's the one place we can, like I said before, we can help them and control it because it seems like every other level of government is still looking for more taxes every time we turn around. So that's my thoughts. Sally, you want to pick up for the board of finance?
This is, you know, great to lay something out like this. So we know what we're up against. You know, I looked at that last chart, definitely would not want to get back to the same level that we were, you know, a few years ago. Just a hundred and seventy million dollar debt. I mean, just the agency will back up that. They're doing such a good job, you know, to get a concern level. So, you know, you have to look at what are the highest risk areas, what are the priorities that, um, they can do things incrementally. I know that the police station, we need, you know, lockers and those kinds of things. The lockers at the high school. So if we could look at things incrementally, you know, to look at that, and I wouldn't be opposed to some, you know, finding, you know, to deal with some of these projects. We would have to talk, you know, with our board of finance, but but clearly taking on a forty million dollar loans this early, this stage is really difficult from the board of finance standpoint. And, you know, what we dealt with the last, you know, how many five years, like Kevin. So that's a, that's a big, forty million is one that sticks out. The other stuff we can probably work with, you know, and we'd have to look at it, but.
I mean, I think to break to your point, Sal, I mean, it's probably tough to imagine. I don't, I don't think we could do it, but no, no, no new borrowing, twenty-two, twenty-six, that seems, you know, very difficult to pull off. In light of some of these projects, but, but, you know, yeah. Responsible, responsible borrowing, you know, the things that are one turn, that are going to give state or the town one turn, not borrowing five. Police card assets, there's one to do. Thank you. Next, Brendan.
I'm here. A little better today. Last week was not very good. Weekend was awful. One of the things that I like about your list, Kevin, is, you know, I know you highlighted some of the bigger projects that are out there. And then, you know, as I remember Jack Healy said when he was here for a short period of time, that we're a small town and we have a lot of buildings. So we have a lot of recurring things that have to get done. And some of the things that are creeped on here that I've never seen before are the window replacement projects, you know, that's that's something new. I don't remember ever seeing that before. You know, the boilers creeping up on there, even though they're down the line. And then, you know, of course, Scolies Field just had that done and all of a sudden we're starting to think about that already. But I'm in line with what, you know, the mayor and board of finance, finance chair said that we can work through some of these things and get us to two thousand twenty-six before we start thinking of another major project. But I think, thank you for the information. It was very helpful. I'm good.
Thanks, Brendan. Board of Finance, Tim?
You know, I think we had two years of COVID and it was tough on people. But my wife and I went to one of our favorite restaurants today and it was kind of funny. I talked to the people, we got to Kennedy friends room and they said COVID was bad because people had money and we couldn't sell anything. She says, but the past few weeks has been the slowest they've ever been because people don't have money. My wife and I were here, we were all, we were eating people in a restaurant that normally at moontime we'd attack. These gas prices and are going to affect food prices, they're gonna, it's affecting heating oil. I put heating oil in my tank at three fifty-four a gallon last Tuesday. And I spotted somebody online to pay four forty a gallon Friday. It's, it's, this is out of control. And I mean, we can't come back and hit the people now with the tax. I'm sorry, but I've taken a ninety degrees change in how I feel about this. That's where I am. We're gonna have to figure something out. And the people just cannot take another bit. Perspective. And I think we have to decide what the priority. Going to be a crazy year. I'm in construction. I've been getting quotes the last couple of weeks and they're telling me, well, hold the price for up to ten days. That's it. I don't know where they're going. Especially any kind of plastic pipe or anything like that. That's incidental, the way the price is falling up. But we have a couple of priorities we've been talking about for a long time. The police station proposal is the most logical and economical I've seen around the council a long, long time. And seen a lot of iterations from the brand new buildings and all kinds of ideas. And I'm a big fan of reuse and saving the environment. This helps us reuse an existing building, you know. I think it's a great plan all the way around. I'd like to see that go forward. But I don't want to spend any money. That doesn't make any sense. Somewhere we're gonna have to. The school ventilation and another headache we've been hearing about for years. I don't know what it's going to cross. I've heard from six million to twenty million. I don't know if anybody knows what it's going to cross. Especially with the way prices are changing. That I'm hoping. Even on the news tonight, the state is fighting about more money. The news board by Sal was that the hidden evil that you don't see, you don't think about, the data. So I'm hoping that will generate some more state funding. I agree with him. We've really got to try to hold the line. People are really getting whacked and you know, I remember like the gas prices in the seventies, the first thing the Federal Reserve does and jet interest rates up, which will stop jobs and destruction for running off. It's going to be a mess in that year. Hope you can hold us to a more action this year. Somehow move forward with a couple of the private.
Yeah, I just, a couple of questions and a couple of comments. Just looking at the boilers and the window replacements, have any cost benefit analysis been done on that? See whether timing of these would have any impact. So for example, with boilers, I know you know, if you've got a twenty, thirty-year-old furnace, it's not very efficient. I don't know what type of innovations have been made in large industrial boilers, but are there potentially large cost savings with the boilers that might cause us to look at differently? The same with windows, technology has changed a lot, a lot. I know fuel prices are going through the roof and I hope they come back down, but there's a lot of upwards pressures on them. So I don't know. Any analysis has been done on that at all, which.
Yeah, sure. Just, and I'm looking at the life cycle of the boilers, where it will push a lot a little further compared to the new technology. And savings with the gas, like Christmas. I think it's incremental, but I don't think we're gonna get a short-term data. We're gonna push that up further on a list and do a high priority project. A priority for the school, I think, changes, the evaluation, their condition, that's a priority. Push a lot for a few more years, so.
Well, I would hope there's some energy efficiency in HVAC too, right?
I think it's drivers, when the DX is going and the energy that's consumed in the summer months compared to what we would save with the chillers. Certainly the windows, when colder and hotter out, you can see more energy using the way the climate for the last few years, we've certainly seen the impact in our building doors. It's something, you know, certainly want to do for the building envelope, but it's not as high as the third, you have mechanical control, so.
The only one was just, just a comment and like as Tim says, whatever, holding the line. I just want to reiterate, I did this at another meeting before that the line's not even held no matter what we do. We can have a zero mil increase and the line is not held because of the motor vehicle implications that are out there. I mentioned at one point, I did analysis on my own bills. And I just looked at, you know, the two mil increase on the town and then I went in and did a rough back and I have a little calculations and with the NADA book on my, on my cars, and they were equal increases. Okay, so I have an equivalent two mil increase on my taxes, on my property, on my two cars. And just from the increase in the motor vehicle. And then Kevin, this is a question for you and you probably don't know. I also have a question for Donna. If you have any insight as to where this twenty-nine mil thing might be heading. If you have any insight as to where this twenty nine mil thing might be heading? And if it has any chance in hell of passing legislature, but then the question to Kevin would be is, there's some conversation about that. If it did go that the conversation is around that they would use last year's figures to figure out the reimbursements. Um, so it'd be twenty nine mils on last year's assessment, which would be great for the taxpayer. But that is all baked into the grand list increase, the, the new numbers. So when we were figuring a two mil, that's if that sixty percent increase in the motor vehicle is baked in there, that already affected two mils that I'm going to see increased on my cars. So again, that new do nothing with zero million increase is a, an effective two million increase to me. But I don't know if you have any insight.
And I have, I have more to add to that. Um, I don't think we know what's happening. I'll be quite honest with you. Um, there are several pieces that we're looking good in terms of, you know, grants available for school construction or HVAC in particular. Um, sent over, uh, something to, um, the bonding today for the pump station. And, uh, I got something from Senator, Senator Loops and said, you know, we're not sure where we're going with any of this right now. I'll put it through, you know, but things are not good. They are looking, they have a big problem with some of the school construction, which of course is all over the news. Okay. If you think that's just going to disappear. It's got to come from somewhere. Okay. So to answer your question, George, I wish I had an answer, but I don't. Do you want to finish for him and then I'll do my, my, my.
You're right that the motor vehicle increase is embedded within the grants. I think the reference to prior year was in the calculation of the state grant. So if they do establish a twenty nine mil increase, the governor, um, along with that proposal OPM produced a run by every town as to what would be a grant provided to the town to help offset the impact of going to the lower middle. So for example, today, the motor vehicle is thirty three ninety three. If we drop that to twenty nine because of state law, that's money on all the motor vehicle grant list value that's lost by the town. That run was actually produced right, literally the day the governor presented his budget. We figured it had to use prior year and it did, only because the grand list is certified by the assessor by January thirty first. The governor's budget is presented, I believe it's the first Wednesday in February. There's just not enough of a window to even know what the numbers should be. So you have to use prior year and do with that run. Uh, it translates to just over one point four million of a state grant to the town to offset the impact, intended impact of the motor vehicle. The, the problem you have is because there's such a, such a growth in the motor vehicle value this year as compared to, to last year. The grant does have a substantial offset, but it would leave a gap. Um, and that gap effectively, assuming no spending difference, when you need a budget, would have to shift to real estate and personal property. Hope that helps.
If they do do what they're doing, we wanted to fund the budget asked, been requested, we would actually need more than two mil. Cause there's a gap, maybe not a lot, I don't know, but, but we wouldn't have enough to fund it.
What you end up with is a greater than two mil number for real estate and personal property and then a deduction.
I'm listening.
Just to chime in on a couple of things. Thank you for doing this. This is easy to follow, easier to follow than, you know, the other four inches of labor here. Obviously, we, we have many priorities that we were trying to address and saying what we can and can't do. There's got to be give and take clearly, but we just can't do all this. I think that the police station is certainly a priority. Not just because he's sitting that single. I will say that, you know, the presentation that they gave to us was very good. Perhaps there's some things that we can live without in that to bring it down to more affordable scenario. I don't know. We just had a first go around of it last, last week. So, um, it was refreshing to see some of those changes. And some of them are going to go back to the police accountability law that are required in terms of, uh, you know, certain educational pieces that they have to do. And I really liked that component when we first walked in. I think it's, I think it's a plus and it's very important. Uh, we need to bring up police officers up to snuck and align with, you know, the best of the best. As far as education for the children go. Mental health is a huge issue and the state is talking about it a lot. And I think there will be some additional funds that come through from the state. I don't know when, I don't know how much. Uh, but I'm hoping that we will get some funding from there. Uh, there was a meeting, a legislative informational session held yesterday. That I made a copy for you, Arrocha, and I'll leave that with you and you can get it back to me later and share it with, with all you guys. And it's on school construction grants and reviews and how they're going to proceed going forward. It's informational. I don't think they know what they're going to do with some of this because there's so much that needs to be done even from the state. Well, it's not just us. We are coming out of a pandemic like we've never seen before. You know, there's, there's war that's surging across in Europe, you know. The price of gas is through the roof and will continue and, and like mentioned by some of my other peers here. The trickle out and around is just going to be earth shattering. I opened my gas bill the other day and had a stroke. I mean, it's like, you know, just to heat the house and it could be on and on. So I, I think that there will be some additional funding that will come through. I just don't know how much. And hopefully we can use it for maybe some of this, you know, um, programs or in terms of education, HVAC, I don't know. But I would like to think that there will be some funding that's available. The other piece, um, I know it's a minimal ask, but we just can't fund everything and we need to tweak. I know education is a priority. We need to educate our children. There's no question. But maybe what we need to do is take a look and try to shift into some other areas within the education budget. Mental health being one of them and I think there will be some money from that too. The pump station, please apply for today. Okay. Um, Jim did that. But like I said, I, you know, Loops was like, I don't know what to tell you. So I hope that that goes through and we'll hopefully be able to apply some additional grants. I know that he stays on top of it. So we wouldn't have a better grant writer around. When and if we look at this window replacement thing at the schools, I think that there should be some energy assistant grants that might be available for that. Um, that's out there. So I think that's something, and I'm sure that Jim knows that, that he should look at. When and if we get to that point. There's incentives, write offs, whatever.
Once you've seen the station, yeah, I've seen it. Once you live it every single day with your kids, your school age, or your grandkids. Problem is so big. Once these kids don't know how to run.
Mike.
That is I. Sorry, I was having a hard time hearing what we were talking about there. Um. You know, obviously I echo everybody's concerns and, and some of the issues that we're having. Funding everything, you know, the prices and the way they go. The one thing I did want to point out, and I know that, you know, when we look at the budget, trying to figure out what we're going to, to, to pay for and how we're going to try and do things, or, or a couple of different things that I look at, at it this way, is one, we all know that we all have hard time agreeing on doing certain projects and, and trying to, to figure out where we're going to spend our money. So when we had agreed to pay for the HVAC with the, the COVID spending, I think it's one of the, it, it's a good product to be able to spend it on. You know, ultimately we'll all have to decide where that money is going to go, but because we've all sat down to figure out that, that's something that we would wanted to, to use that money for that. It, it's, it's a project that's been long in the running and it's something that we, we should kind of, we should commit to. And secondly, I, I understand the need for, you know, the budgets and not hitting the townspeople with, with extra money and extra taxes and that type of thing. And I completely understand that. Who, who wants to pay extra taxes? You know, not me, that's for sure. But we also have to understand that if we don't fund contracts that we have with the town, namely with teachers, with people that work in town, with people that work for town hall, we'll be putting people out of work. And to, you know, in an economy like this, putting people and, and townspeople who do work for the school and who work for the town out of work too, is also something that I really do not want to do. And that's something that we all need to consider when we're looking at these budgets. That if we're not going to fund positions and not going to fund people that are working right currently now in town, that that's what we're going to end up having to do. And those are things that we really need to consider when we're looking at the numbers and the budgets and how to make it work.
Couple of questions in different areas. The ninety million dollar program for school construction. You know, if that was a competitive type of managers that can gain allocation by for the harp, the ARPA money thing?
The one that the governor just talked about, the ninety million.
That's, okay, that's going to be competitive. They're, they're not going to be able to do everybody's. Project, let's put it, we were told that this was news about a week ago, week and a half ago, that he was introducing this. And we've shown interest clearly, we've talked about it and that's why we even thought about maybe trying to shift some of that ARPA money to do other stuff, okay? If we were eligible for that HVAC money, okay? Um, but there is no promises and we are not the only people that want that feature.
Yeah, I think, I think that's an important consideration, you know, to leave out there. I guarantee.
No, there's no guarantees. That's why even the, the grant that, or, you know, that were the bonding that we just put in for the pump station. That, you know, thank you and we'll put in and it's one of your priorities. There are no promises. There are no promises. And we have to match whatever that project it's costing us. It's a fifty percent match, yes.
And I'm not sure if this question is for Chief or someone else. I didn't see the presentation last, but I wish I had. Um, I'll go back and watch it on the tape, but some people have made some mentions of the Police Accountability Act and the relationship to this project. Can you tell me specifically what plus in this five million dollar project are being addressed? By the, you know, the rules, you know, the accountability.
Well, I think one has a lot to do with the training. Different training, we can roll the laws that have changed. We don't have adequate space at our facility. We don't have a training room. So this renovation plan addresses that with a, with a multi-purpose community rooms, similar to this space. Where that we could use for training, we can host training. Our commission can have meetings, uh, it's a very eventual police commission meeting in our conference room. Um, you, you know what that's like. It's, it's very tiny. There's no area for a caucus room, things like that. And also one, one of the things we, you know, we want to do more of is the community engagement piece. And that training multi-purpose room, um, will help us do that. It's, you know, says it, police academies, open houses. Um, and, and just allowing members of the community to utilize that space for birthday parties or other events that they want to do at the police. Well, that's one area.
When he was presenting, Brian mentioned when he was talking about the second Sally Court and safety for both prisoners and the officers, does that police accountability?
I, I, I don't think the accountability though, he was, he was speaking to accreditation standards and things like that. So there's standards that are applicable to our holding facility. Officer safety wise, I think Brian was talking about, that's a, that's a huge concern. When you call a car on our Sally Court, you're trying to get a prisoner out of the car. There's no room, especially if they're fighting and, and it's dangerous. So the Sally Court, uh, uh, the dual Sally Courts addresses that. I mean, they, they addressed, uh, I mean, it was really a unique opportunity we have with the Board of Ed. Giving us that space. The mayor knows, we've been talking about locker room renovations for years. And we can't renovate in where the locker rooms are now. So because the Board of Ed, uh, gave us that space, that's where the locker rooms have been moved. And then Brian did a fantastic job utilizing the remainder of these spaces to address the training rooms, to address, um, you know, uh, bureaus and, and lumping offices by divisions. Our investigations are all in one area now. We're not split off throughout the department. So um, I really think we're getting a lot of bag for our buck. Um, I know it's not cheap, but like, like I said, compared to where we were twenty one million. Um, you know, a few years. Um, and this is not a stopgap, you know, uh, Brian said, this is a twenty plus year uh, solution for us. So I know there's a lot of competing interests going on here, but if there's any way, well, we can move this one finally past the goalposts, we think, um, it's going to help us with our recruiting and retention too.
Yeah, I, we, we've been talking about locker rooms since I got on the board of finance for years. Now that we did, you know, maybe unfortunately take this and really piece me. Communications, then we go to meeting rooms, we go to jail cells, you know, and then we start talking about locker rooms. So I was a little surprised when now I see a five million dollar number, you know. I'm gonna have to do a little bit, you know, homework on my own to get caught up to see what, you know, what, what the whole specifics are. That's why I was just a little surprised that all of a sudden now we've got another five million dollars, you know, to get it like.
Can I just add, Jerry, if I can interject, they do have, um, the architect did work it out in terms of over a period of years. It was very, very interesting.
I mean, I guess, I, I guess the vision would be like a three phase type project.
Does anybody know if there's any
I think it was a lot of unfunded mandates.
Yeah, I was just going to say, oh, I want to fund.
You know, I, I just want to go back and, and also say that, you know, we, we had our first, we had our joint meeting. I forget if it was January or December or whatever, um, you know, there was a lot of support for the ARPA grant whose HVAC systems. Um, I think it was a good idea that, I still think it's a good idea. Taking that money to use on something that otherwise we find that we get more payback. Uh, for, for, for the use of those monies by applying them to something that we would otherwise be planning. So
That's the, yes, sir. We said host trainings. That means we would charge other towns for trains here. No, so a lot, a lot of times what happens is that you're No, so a lot of times what happens is that you're a host agency, you get free seats for the training, and then everyone else would pay. The outside agencies that are coming in for your training, we don't even have a space there to do that, so we don't. We're the ones that are paying to attend the other agencies that are being upgraded.
That's the not least. All right. I won't belabor the points that have already been made, but I guess to start, I'll say that this was obviously a lot of hard work. With this being my first budget process, it's been very eye-opening to see how much work goes into it and Roche from taking us on all the tours of the facilities, and Kevin, I know he spent a lot of long nights in this, Mike and Doug as well. And I think having the visuals of this is where our budget money goes to was probably the most helpful part of the process for me. So starting back in December, seeing the police department with the open house that you guys had. Extremely helpful. Because in the presentation last week, when they were speaking to the Sallyport expansion, as an example, I've been in that Sallyport. It's very tight. I did not have. Unfortunately, the door was open. But it's getting a sense for what facilities we're working with right now and what our needs are long term was extremely useful as kind of a touchstone for me. Likewise, Roche and Kate organizing the school tours and talking through some of the long-term issues that are, that need to be addressed in the next couple in the next couple of years was really great for me as well. I guess just the one thing that's on my mind right now is something that's been addressed a couple of times in their council meetings is just, you know, having that long-term vision for setting priorities for not even just thinking in terms of this fiscal year, but two, three fiscal years from now. And so for me, kind of just boiling it down to what my priorities are and what are, what I think a lot of our priorities are, are just taking it all into context in terms of what are the institutions that have been most intimately impacted by the last two years. And I think it's been touched on by a couple of people, but public safety and education, I think are really the two things that go hand in hand in a, in a community. It's what makes our particular community extremely attractive to a lot of people. We want safe streets, we want good schools. And so um, you know, my, where my mind is at as we go through this, this process is ensuring that those two particular institutions are being addressed to the extent that they should be addressed, but also thinking with the mentality of with some of these projects, if you don't address them with some degree of urgency and immediacy, we run, we run the risk that it's going to get more expensive later on. You've seen this with the HVAC project, just as an example, where the the cost looked a lot more favorable a couple of months ago than it does now. And I think with having those funds in hand at least to address it on a very conservative level, starting with Willard School, seems to me like a responsible option to address a community in our town and school. So beyond that, I'm really just, you know, looking forward to learn more about the additional projects, I think, I guess, you know, regarding the senior community. I think that's another community that has also been intimately impacted by COVID especially. And I guess you know, just having that population in mind as well as we have the conversation about that, that's what those needs are. Obviously, that's important too. So that's really, you know, the breakdown of my. This will proceed.
Peter?
Well.
Arthur Statesman, the last word? Not the last word, but.
That'd be nice.
For our first time, you know, go run again.
I never learned anything while I was talking. And unfortunately, I, I missed Tuesday night's presentation. And I'm most concerned, I think, with the school. We'll have to see what, we'll have to make a determination, you know, what I heard. We'll do that.
Let's say you.
Yeah, so, I mean, my just thoughts on planning and make the philosophical statement that I would make. I get it. I think Mike said it, nobody wants to pay taxes, zero mail. This will be the fourth year that we're holding the line, just right, right? So all of you know this, if you're looking at the presentation and that's. So we wanted to get into.
I wish it was.
That you're pushing it, and my fear is that at the same time that we are reducing the debt service, we have not added anything to the annual capital placement budget. Two hundred million dollars in capitals, ideally we should have at least a one, three million dollars. We have built that gradually. We have knocked out this police station in two years, three and three. So every year you pick something. If it's a boiler, if it's a chilling, if it's a window, if it's a roof, you have three million dollars at least to play with. Somehow, we need to get to that, but math is a lot, right? Like, if you look at, we just, yeah, pretty much a projection that using some other discussion, just a two percent increase in the Board of Ed, two percent. And the two percent in the town, you see what it does to the middle way, not even talking about capital. So I, I'm just worried that you're pushing some of these things to a certain degree, and you might have to go and borrow more. Except for, because these things, I will, whoops, have to get the face that's on board. So this is the sort of the element in the room, but I'll say that this has begun about the people, you have the, so one of the things that we haven't talked about is what is it that you want to take off the table, not find with the program or a service or something? That might be a way to permanently use the budget, because George talked about the modern vehicles, and even if you don't increase them, but you're paying more. Same way with the town, same amount of gasoline, you're paying more, same amount of electricity, you're paying more. Same amount of insurance coverage, you're paying more, same amount of grass seed fertilizer, you're paying more. So it just doesn't, something has to be taken off the way, or that the math should work. It's simple, right? It's not very complicated. So I, I just think that at some point, we are agreeing that we can do everything at the town. And probably, not probably today, a discussion about other things that are not important, but as important that we are willing to take off the budget. Maybe that's a way that we can keep the, so to say, the balance, otherwise it just doesn't work out. So I just feel that with discussion and talk.
I would also suggest to visit the things that are on the table and see if there's areas within those proposals that can be either reduced or eliminated in terms of by law. I think that we need to start perhaps there as opposed to eliminating, you know, one whole thing that we want to, to get done with, one thing that's.
The, the other one we'll put on the table is that partially toward when you look at incrementing other income from one year to another, you're just assuming the base is correct to begin. You know what I'm saying? You can just look at it and say an area is getting funded at only two percent, if your competition is funding at four percent. But maybe you're funded at a high level to begin. So it's probably good to set some parameters to say your funding needs to be compared to your peers at a certain level. The median or, or the fifty percent pilot, the seventy percent pilot. You can get there overnight, but that's the, when you're planning for it, you know where you stand against your peer and competition.
Yeah, thank you. We did have an increase in revenue because of the groundless, but and I think we should do both sides of this equation, you know, on the same one, we're looking at the costs associated with bonding. Why don't we do a five to seven-year prediction on how our groundless is going to grow also, so at least we know, you know, is there, you know, some benefit? Where's the wealth there? We did have about two and a half million this year.
Close to three percent growth, right?
Yeah, so, but we got all washed away. I mean, the hard part was that we, we used a million, two of, of funds that were left over from the high school last year. Then we used some of the rescue funds at seven, so we used almost two million dollars to get to the zero rate. That was a one-shot deal, so we're trying, we're trying to make that up this year. So that's two million short, we're already short. We're trying to, you know, recover, you know, from this year's budget. So, you know, we talked a little about it. We don't want to do that, you know, going forward, because we're gonna, if we do that this year, we're gonna have that same problem next year. You know, we just can't do it. And I agree that we should be focusing on, you know, three hundred million dollars that we'll have to sustain and maintain. Okay, and we haven't, we've done a lot of it, but not to the level that we should have, you know. Might be misleading, but, you know, focus more on that. But, you know, if you look at all, like you said, Roche, we're not going to come up. Hard to come up with zero equals. Putting aside that we have a model of difference.
Yeah.
But we're gonna really have to work hard to get to some reasonable level. I mean, inflation, fuel, I mean, everybody's still pensioners, and it's more than that at the height of the pandemic. I mean, this is worse than the height of pandemic. So we can't go forward to, you know, even a one mil, I don't think, to our citizens. Yeah, you know, and, and, you know, one of the things is I did sit with the Board of Education at a private meeting, and I told them, you know, you gotta sharpen your pencil once in a while. And frankly, I didn't get anywhere, to be honest with you. So they have to look deep and say, are they gonna contribute, you know, we can't go with those kind of increases. And, and bottom line is, they've had, they had surplus in the last year, one year, they didn't spend a million dollars of the, of the choice grant funds because they didn't need it. So I'm just asking them, we want to, we want to have a high-quality education, but you gotta kind of dig deep over it.
Something else, something else you could consider, I'll throw it on the table. Far enough away from everybody.
He's a baseball player, he probably has to put a bottle of water.
One, one of the things, if I go back to my private sector days, is you evaluate where you are and what you're doing. And sometimes, to grow in one area, you decline or exit another area, a market, a product, whatever. You've got some great assets and investments here. I don't know, put aside no offense, make the roads, bridges, I'll be cheers for those, they're needed, but don't be that. But the community seniors. And it's, it's a, the video, everything I look at, it's a beautiful community senior, the police station looks fantastic, not just compared to what's there, pretty much anything would, but but then you can ask yourself, are there other assets that you have that maybe are not what the town wants to be in or dealing with as you look forward? And could you, for all intents and purposes, trade out? And I'll, I'll throw three on the table. I'm not saying do it, I'm not saying don't do it, but there are three things to consider that are not essential. What's that? Well, I mean, you've talked about public safety and education as, and in every unit, that's what it is, it's no different. Those are, those are essential. But you have to ask yourself the question, if you look at the surrounding communities, many of which have been referenced tonight, many of them are MDC communities. Do you continue to own Berlin Water? Do you continue to own your own water and sewer? Other communities have sold it. Avon actually had Avon Water Company, had the most, had the largest water, had the largest water source in the state, and sold it. It's an option. Obviously, it's a one-time element, but if you're looking to avoid bonding but accomplish some of these things, is that something you consider? And these companies that own them privately, or companies like MDC, they're charging money and they're investing in their capital revenue, because that's all they do. Second one to consider would be Pistol Creek. You go back a few years, you took a three and a half million dollar taxable piece of property off the tax rolls, spent five and a half million dollars bonding to buy it, which we're still paying on. It's a great facility. It is used for a number of purposes. It's, it's another area where you have a lot of great passive recreation. It's really, it's a wonderful spot. But you are not only paying for that, you're foregoing potential tax revenue there, you potentially consider trading that out for something that you have. And then the third one, and I'm plenty far away from Jerry for this one, do you consider whether you want to be in the municipal golfing business? I will tell you, I live in a town that has two privately owned public golf courses. They are in the top ten taxpayers in the town. We don't have Northeast Utilities corporate headquarters, so they probably would fall further on the list here, but nonetheless, it's something to consider. Again, I'm not suggesting you do it, I'm not suggesting you don't. But if you want to put on kind of that private sector hat of, are the things you're in that maybe you get out of for the benefit of other things that going forward are more appealing? Just something to consider as an alternative to taxes or bonds. Well, I don't think you'd sell it, but that, that would be removing the operating loss, not, there's no real assets, these are out of debt, because they're actual assets you could sell to someone, but you would need a charter revision. As best I can tell, that's either done, you probably know this, but I looked at the statute as a novice. It seems like there's two ways to do it. One is a lot of signatures, and the other is two-thirds of the authorizing body, which would be, I understand, at the council. So if five, the seven council members said, we want to call a charter revision, you can call a charter revision and put it out there. But right now, VNA is in the charter, and the VNA is responsible not just for, or VNA administrators, not just responsible for the VNA, but also running the school nurses. So you, you'd have a dual, you'd have to eliminate it and probably very likely move that under the responsibility of the Board of Ed. But it's, is another area you could talk about.
Just the comment on the VNA, I was on the charter revision commission the last time. Would you like? We actually tried to change language relative to VNA. Remember, there were multiple questions. The last question, the question was a catch-all with like a dozen things in it, and that was in there. We weren't actually trying to get rid of the VNA, per se, but this subtle wording in the VNA that says thou shalt do this, thou shalt do that, versus thou will, you will, you can do this, you can do that. Just that subtle change would give you a lot more flexibility on how you could, I mean, there may be a very acute need for VNA, but not in the capacity we use it today. I was actually talking to Peter Zerbozo, who's a nurse and whatever, and, you know, it may be the VNA, it's changed or reborn as having care managers for the seniors in town, whatever. That's, that's a critical piece, having gone through three or four years of acute medical requirements for both my mother and my son-in-law who passed away a year ago. I can tell you, these care managers and nurse navigators are lifesavers. And I can tell you, most people, or a lot of people walking into a hospital don't know they're available for them. And, and they're the ones that put you in, in contact with the people who can help you. You don't necessarily have to have the people that help you, but you need somebody to help people find what is available, whether it be Harvard Health Care, whatever.
Or, so, so George, just so I understand. So a, a care manager would be almost like a liaison between a patient and a provider?
Yes. I mean, if you go into Hartford Hospital and you have something major, you are assigned a care manager, depends on the hospital, be a care manager and nurse navigator or whatever. If you go into like Harvard Health Care Rehab, you have a care manager. When you're all said and done with, with your rehab, they're the ones that are contacting all the different health care agencies around, because you're now going home, and they have a program you need to be under, and they find you the resources to get to you. But if you don't have that, you're, you're left to your own, you're left to the device of your insurance company. They're the advocates with your insurance company for what you need, and that's really what, what people need. The VNA is just, the one thing you do have to realize too is The V N A is just, the one thing you do have to realize too is because we have the V N A. And as it is worded in the charter, we do have state statutes that apply to it as well, so a charter change, other. We have to be, we have to be careful with charters change we made. Because it would violate the state statute since we have that entity already, so it's not, unfortunately not as simple as us just changing language. We have to either. It's a very difficult road with V N A, uh, but, you know, sure, certainly something to think about, of course.
It it probably is difficult, that's why we have lawyers. Um, you know, and not that many years ago, not that many years ago, there were probably fifty or sixty municipal V N A's. Now there's two, so it's not impossible to get rid of them, you know. To look at, and and, you know. I've been hoping on it for four years now. But looking at it, I'm sure they do great work, I've heard that, you know, other people that they do great work. But the question comes down to, is this really something that should be provided or must be provided by this town? Um, and in my mind, it's not, um, and in our case, I don't think. townspeople understanding that there's an eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollar budget gap that that creates every year.
V N A Commission didn't even understand that, first year I did love.
I I've talked to any number of people and they just, you know. So, to me, I, if we're really talking about looking long range, I would encourage the council to. To call for a charter revision commission, I think there's other things within our governmental setup that need addressing also. And I think, uh, you know, those things take quite a bit of time to accomplish too. Um, so.
How many years?
So, one of the things everyone mentioned was a plan, well, you know, I I think we've had a plan, I I I'm not sure if everybody maybe understands the plan. The plan was certainly, again, I can only go back to my office, but the plan was certainly to pay our debt down. And by paying our debt down, obviously, it frees up more money from the budget, because the debt payment goes down every year. We had this whole debt payment year of six million dollars, whatever, seven million, it was eight million, I think, before. Um, that's a lot of money to fund a lot of things in town. Um, so, you know, that's, that's the plan we're working forward to, which will free up some money. And as we work towards that, we understand, you know, certainly, council understands. Or finance understands, everybody understands that, you know, we still are funding things that are important to the town, the town running, and and I think we've made a lot of improvements. We're also saddled with, we we haven't mentioned was pension debt, which is a huge. Chunk of money, uh, millions of dollars to uh to buy out our, our, you know, people that were retiring under the old plan. That's the plan that the town went with and, but but we were stuck with it, with with it not being funded for many years, not even a dollar. Funded, you know, so, um, you know, we have to, we can't. You know, it was twelve to fifteen years to get to that amount of debt and not fix things. You can't get out of it in six years, you can't get out of it in eight years, a few more and we're almost beyond it. So, you know, that's the plan, and we're working on it, and I, personally, I think, not not just given to me and the council or any of us here today, but. We're getting, it's, it's a tough place to go, you know, no inflation now is is worse. Um, it makes it that much harder, just, you know, the other night, like. You mentioned, you know, we've all mentioned, like, it was a ten million dollar plan, I think, for three schools, now it's fifteen to twenty. So that was kind of astounding for that, but. Um, education though, and and all these budget stuff too, with with this. There's gonna be the most crazy and the most, I think I hear it the most from the board of that budget every year, it's been here. Every year, last couple of years have been pretty good, because we, I mean, I think we funded them to catch up to where they were behind. But, um. I guess when I read it in the paper and see letters and see it everywhere, you you're cutting their budget, you know, again. We've never cut their budget, we can't cut their budget, as you all know, that are involved here, we can't cut it, right, for state statute, it has to have a little increase. But we've always given it a much bigger increase than it needed to have under statute, of course, to keep it running. So we've never cut their budget, obviously we've lowered the increase they've asked for, as we have with the town budget. Those budgets have been cut in Berlin since I've been here, so that that just drives me crazy to hear that. And that's what's out there, unfortunately, if you go forward in the budget season, whether it's Board of Ed meeting, or whether it's a, you know, budget meeting, or wherever, or council, oh, you're cutting their budget. Nobody's cutting anything, they're getting, they're gonna get, even this year. Every year, the last two years with tax increase, they got increases, everybody did. Just a degree of the increase, right, that's what we're talking about, so. I ask all of you to help, um. Educate the public, continue to educate them, because there is a lot of things that don't understand, most of us didn't understand them and forgot. And realized what a mistake it may be, or no, all the hard work that we have to put in for the big tech. Um, but, no, it's great to help the town, that's why we're all here, and I think that's why Berlin works, right? I always say, we've got all these boards and commissions that are there for. The volunteer, right, volunteer fire, on on down to, you know, all the boards and commissions, so, and and of course our. Town government does great, police department, second to none, public works, you know. I'm amazed that Doug at the school system, I'm amazed that McGee, and we watched him McGee. Now, I I couldn't believe the the shape that, you know, kept that school in the town staff, but, you know, the board of staff and the anti-furl staff. Unbelievable, place was spotless, it looked great, I mean, it's, you know, however old it is. So, you know, the town, it's, it's a great town, it's doing well, it's difficult times, right? It's very difficult, COVID was, you know, probably the worst thing we've seen in quite a while. But I I think we're doing very well, as I talk to the other mayors and other towns. Doing pretty well, I talked to Rocky Hill a lot, um, you know. They got issues there, or every town does, we all had issues, but Berlin is, uh, you know, doing pretty well, from what I could see from watching on the town, so. But it's difficult, we know that, we know that, it's very difficult, but we. I think done great, no, no one wants to see the schools, um, falter, and they haven't, they've grown and, um. You know, Mr. Fidigni to Julia, president of the board this year. They recognize the last two, three years, what we've done to them, we have raised their, you know, spending. And we've raised them up to where they are very competitive, not the most competitive to our surrounding town. So we've done that, you know, and that and that will continue, you know, depending on the funding levels, of course, it's gonna be funded properly. And, you know, the other difficult things sometimes with that budgets are. And again, just like people say, we're cutting it, we give them, our only control is that lump sum, right, we can give that lump sum of money. And as I've seen in a couple of years that we're gotten hungry, sad, but that's what happened. The things they're gonna eliminate are the ones that will, of course, create the most controversy in public. And 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 that's tough to get through sometimes, too, that's on them. You know, whatever bucket of money we give them, it's up to them to fund their program. Now, one year. You were arguing up four hundred thousand dollars. Got a, you know, a huge budget here, a million dollar budget, you can't find four hundred thousand dollars in it, then honestly, you shouldn't be. And that's how I feel, that's, that's a small percentage of the large budget that they have. One particular program which they did use, but that was the program that we went on the chopping block. And that's sad to have to negotiate that, that I didn't, but we got through that too, so, you know. That's why I wanted to get us all together and talk about it, you know, try and get us, and we're all not gonna agree, we all not know that, but. At least, uh, conceptually, we agree how we can go forward and. Do the best we can and fund the best we can, and I think, again. We're headed in the right direction, you know, as far as, uh, how we run the town. And what we fixed in the town, what desperately needed to be fixed, gets fixed, gets placed, you know, gets paid, it's the bridges. Things are not the most sexy things to talk about, it's, you know, oh, we gotta repair that bridge, oh, okay, that's great, Mark. What are you doing with the field that's saved, you know? But it's gotta get done, and and they have gotten, the dam finally got fixed, right, the railroad, that that was a huge project that. Uh, so, you know, there are some important projects that we're thinking on, again, I can always go back to public safety, fire trucks. By the favorite score, right, the one that caught on fire, vacuum fire, you can't make that up, okay, you can't, it was an electrical fire. Nobody got hurt, but you can't make that up, that's a whole labor. So, I think everybody who, you know, since I've been here, worked on council and board finance, boards and commissions. I'm planning zoning for sixteen years, everybody puts in a a lot of time. But that's why the town runs well, that's why we're doing well with real estate. We're doing well with, uh, what, almost a hundred million dollars of best investment in the last five years, a hundred million dollars of investment. I tell the surrounding town mayor that, they're like, what? I told the governor that, it's going fair. How'd you do that? I guess just lucky, no, we worked, we worked at, we worked at, you know, created seven hundred and ninety jobs, you know, we've. Got a lot of businesses that are moving now, so hopefully, as we go forward, and and some of the construction. Is gonna, you know, to your points now, gonna decrease our our grant, so, you know, that's, that's coming too. That's all part of the plan too, you know, there's a plan, there is a plan, may not be, you know, talked about every day, but. We're all, all of us here, we're moving in that direction, so. But it's not easy, you know that, not even the issues. Work to do, um, lucky them, and the council group should, you know, dig into the budget a little bit. So what else, anything else you guys think? Talk about what we're hearing.
Taylor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're getting close to. Being too late to get something on the ballot in November if we wanted a charter.
So, the, the issue with charter is that, and and, you know. It's who you put on it. Let's be real, I've been through a lot of charter changes since I started here twenty years ago. And there were some that were very quick, others that were very intense. Peter, I think I met you twenty years ago on a charter visit, and, um. I'm not sure why I'm the liaison, but thank you, I think, but, um. But anyway, the, the issue is, is that you have to have, like, you have to have public hearings, you have to. Um, have your meetings, and especially with this election, is that, um, the questions have to be formalized. And and set by the beginning of September. For the questions for the ballot for November, so it's a very tight window that I don't really know, I can map it out for you. But I would suggest that if you wanted to charter revision, is to maybe start now. And know that it will go on municipal election, if that's what you want. You'll have a much bigger turnout during the governor's election, you all know that. Nobody votes, or a very small percentage votes to municipal elections, but it's, it's, it's the timing.
Okay, wasn't part of the, part of the issue though, is like, this, this kind of a couple of ways you can approach it. You can have the town council give very specific instruction to the mission. Doesn't necessarily keep them from straying, or you can open-ended it to some degree, or you can give them some idea. When we were on it, we were kind of open-ended, I feel, that takes a long time.
It's open-ended though by design.
Well, it's.
But 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 if we can.
I mean, you can say, this is what we want, we want you definitively to go in these two, every areas. We could, and and try not to, you can say, you know, they can, they can stray, but, and they will.
Yeah, that's why we should make a plan for. And maybe throw some money in the budget for staff.
What is the target?
There's been different numbers, so usually you try to have a balance. Yeah, so a lot of times you try to have a percent, you can't tell you wanna do it, you can have just. You're gonna just council and and board of finance or whatever you wanna do. Or you could have, you know, sometimes you try to have a couple people who are residents that are not, you know, involved. Um, this, your philosophy at the time, uh, but I will agree with Mr. Miller, and that is that you can suggest. That these are the target areas. And could I bend on a couple of them that are very, very, they were very tight, and they went boom, boom, but, um. There wasn't a lot of discussion at the time for other things.
If we, if we were to have something that argued, could we do this forever?
If you wanna put me over the edge, of course.
Sure, why not?
We could do anything that anyone.
It's really just focused on, you know, maybe one or two changes, and that's it. Maybe we could get something done.
Let me go back on previous, um, calendars, and I'll show you what I have, and I'll talk to, um, it's funny to not know about it. And I'll try to have something for you. Uh, maybe Monday? If that's sooner, I'll do the best I can.
Okay, there's, there's some percentage of the turnout that you have to handle, isn't there?
No, not, no, that's in some of the charters, so it's not in our charter. So like Shake's.
For approving the charters.
No. What Bradford has it, they have it where they have to have a certain percentage come out, but we don't have it.
They wanted to sell an asset like this, does it, would you have required a charter change?
Um, I don't think so, I mean, it basically depends on what the asset is, we investigate the three I mentioned. I don't envision that you.
The one you mentioned, the town doesn't control, we only control about a third of the water.
We wouldn't be able to sell the other.
We have a beautiful trailer park. Make one, we have the world of plants anywhere. And like, when it's flooded, that part of public works, or that's something contract.
You know what I'm saying, are we really seeing the quality of the thing?
Right now, with the current rents, sixteen units with about fifty-six thousand dollars in revenue. Pay about eight thousand dollars for the water to come in there, you know, what we're really doing is renting the land. They're putting a trailer park, and then they're paying property taxes on any vehicles they have, as well as the trailer park, so.
When that was built, that was supposed to be, at the end of life, but that tenant, they weren't supposed to resell that unit, and it was supposed to die out.
You're right, that is an asset that could potentially be, could be sold.
I don't understand why we're in the trailer park.
Kevin, you said they could sell the water.
They said to do it, you would have to repay the federal and state government for their contribution. So I believe it's the feds own, the feds contributed twenty-five percent state contribution, the town is fifty percent, percentage may be slighted off. So you'd have to give back the gains that you would give. I guess it depends on the value.
Yeah, that's all we wanted.
I know we have a plan, I know Roche has a plan, and we've talked about it, there's a plan going forward with the board, so it'll make it even better.
With the order, just to make sure we had a conversation with the party that was in question. But the other two districts came into play, and they were, they would have been more. Relate to going that direction there through.
Yeah. The big difference when you set it up. An organization like the M D C would provide the public or a private, I think, everywhere. The ones that buy, what they call it, aquarium operators, or training.
The problem though is. The problem though is to sell it. Like you said, we had these discussions the last years ago, brought in the company and, but, but without uniting all the water districts. That will, you know, as a group for the whole town. They really weren't that interested in, and, and I didn't get a sense from the other two water districts. They weren't interested.
A big question on the ballot, do you want the town to control the water? Because most people don't understand that.
We can't do it.
We can't do it. Can we ask some advisory questions where people prefer that? Not, not applying, like, do you want to come for work? So people, no one understands it separately.
The two water districts could choose themselves. Or the council would have to accept them in.
People have to understand they have that option.
Try to get it, get out there a lot, for the people to go to their meetings. And it's very difficult to get that information out, out. To have them understand they are the ones or the state to end up. So, uh, and then there was the question of liability. Scary because based upon these Berlin, that's resolved, and we put that over right before our time, but. That was a lot, a lot of work that had to be done in the town and they got a lot of liability. I don't know, sometimes I hear from the other water districts, I don't think they're, and from Ray, I don't know. But feeling that they're up to speed in their maintenance and replacement that the Berlin Water Control Commission is, so. It would take a lot, a lot of, like, I suspect it's true. We don't, we don't really know. We don't know the whole story, because we don't run, but, um, we might take on a lot of liabilities. One help, bottom line, our budget, but, uh, you know, still would be much more efficient to do it that way. Or, I know perhaps with the seller, but.
And those are just, again, I'm not promoting any one of them that's selling it off, but they are options that you can consider.
It's a great, they're probably tarnished. You know, and remember, we're here for, you know, we're here for the people. People elect us and, you know, tell us, I mean, you know, it's the most important thing. Me, I'm sure to all of you, when you are out there at gas stations, stop and shop, wherever you're at, you know, come up and tell you, or I ask them that. You know, so that's, you know, it's hard, it's hard to get people's opinion. And very hard to get people to come to meetings, right? We know that it's hard to guess what do people really want? Because I think we all would, on council, on board of finance, on the board of ed. And they've had some of that recently. They heard what people wanted on board of ed. But, and that's not always pretty either, but, but you want to hear what the people, you know? Tell people that all the time. Hey, you elected us, what do you want us to do? Not me making the decision or Charlie or any of us. What do you want us to do? It's your, you know, all of our town. Hard to get that information, so you do the best you can with what you hear from the public, right?
May I ask a question? So, am I hearing that we have to, there's a census that we got away in the police station and the the HBAC project started next year, this year.
I think next year. But.
This for twenty-three?
Yeah.
That's the.
That's what I heard, right? Pretty much.
So what's the question again? Why, Matt, you're doing the whole thing, it's five point two. We studied it for two years.
Exactly. But then you got phase one, phase two, phase three, he's plugged it in every year.
But if we proceed next year with the three million dollar first phase. We avoid the referendum issue by doing that?
You would be automatic referendum. If you chose to bond. You could look at the fund balance, you could look at a combination of that. It's a question of, that's probably at that point, that's where it'll go. Probably the conversation, the next board of finance would say, what is the best way to do that? Because if it's bonding, then we would need to add a debt service into the next budget that's not embedded in there. You wanted to go in a different direction. There may be other ways to do it.
I mean, no, again, you know, I mean, you know, in relation to. I think I'd like a little more information on, you know, police station, so at least I can have it. But I mean, I believe, you know, it's in the, it's in the, it's a sense, you know, of upgrade in those areas. I'd like a little more.
And, but should we give permission, you know? Yeah. I think the presentation was very, it's sort of, we're having to be, um, not having a ton of information on specifics of what the project would like. And it doesn't seem to me like there's anything that might for figuring out the timetable for the police agent. I think kinda, kinda where we left it was, you know, obviously we'd like to do this sooner, we're gonna do it, but there's no hard pass deadline.
One, one caveat.
Yeah.
The degree of a fine for price.
Right, right.
Do it, it's longer than.
I took it, was it six months?
It's the contingency here, there was a, there's a project contingency of fifteen percent. But I think this was good for a six month period.
I thought it was. Backing in like the, the, the margin there for sensitive.
I mean, every day, construction costs, every single day. So the more, especially the way things are now. For example, I'm doing a project at work and I have to figure roughly thirty percent where I started this six months ago. That's how much we're, materials, labor, et cetera. It's ridiculous.
We can get a, you know, copy of the present.
Oh, no, I think they should.
Same time, we could look at, you know, maybe that first increment, how, how do we find this? You know, so we can, you know, we can do it terrible. So, and that's, I don't want to hold anything up, but I took a look.
Do you, um, would it help if, if, I don't mean, but would it help if I just send you the link to the video and send you also the minutes or something? Would that be, could it be more direct to your email?
Okay. Yeah, that was really helpful too.
Kevin, I can send you, I can send you guys the, uh, Brian, he was actually just finished today. The whole package. We've got the lease, lease assessment, the actual plans, the phasing and the process broken out. So that might be helpful, but I would encourage you to watch if you hadn't seen the actual presentation. It is very helpful. Brian goes into exactly how the phasing works and actually has pictures and the diagram, so. And I actually watched some of the back on, it's, it's actually pretty well done on, you know, on the video.
So maybe when you send them all the information, I'll just give you the link. And that way they don't have to look at the website.
Is, is the six months concluded on the, or? Ice move?
So Roche, just to let you know, it's late summer of twenty twenty-two. In terms of the start.
I, I'm going to start, this is phase one now, phase two a year later, incredibly high. Yeah, I think we had an escalator idol.
They, they did. It was a fifteen percent contingency.
Three and a half percentages displayed.
From at the year this year.
I think it's a liability for the town, not, just like if we had a bad ridge and somebody got hurt, an officer. One of their customers was injured from our lack of improvement, I think he might be liable, I really think.
And that is a priority for the side two, is prioritizing officer safety in those areas of the contention. A city holding area. Um, but we know there's a problem and the, the right owner address, especially if there's standards.
I think we're on agreement that this is where, I think that's not even a question, question twice. If we have to pay five point two, that affects what we do. If we pay three million, we have a lot more leeway to do this.
We, Kate, Kate brought up a good point, and we'll follow up with Jeff and Alprey on this. If your project costs a certain amount of money, then that may be where the ordinance has to be. Phasing it in is how you go about spending that money. So if the project is five point two million, even if we're phasing, we're not actually buying the money. But if it's, if we have to do it that way, it's over five million, then it would be an automatic referendum. Putting it probably on the November would be the first time, um, before you do anything, because then it would require approval from the voters to be able to move forward. So.
So that's fun, that's a cool part, the whole family's fun.
That's if the ordinance has to encompass the whole project.
It's never been done that I know of in the town of Rowan, that you haven't worked in that. I mean, maybe by, maybe there was changes done periodically, I can't tell you that. But when I was, uh, Town Clerk in Wellington, we didn't, we did it piecemeal. You know, they would go in and they would say, okay, here's an ordinance, it's a million dollars for the study and design of a new high school. Then they would go in, two years later, and they would say, okay, now we need ten million, you know, whatever. So they did it in, in segments. That's not anything that you've done here. You really and truly have, um, tried hard to say, this is the amount that's going to be on the ordinance. I'm not saying it's right, I'm just saying that that's been here. And then when you change the charter, where you have that five million cap, before you go to referendum. We have to talk to Attorney Denofield, but I think it's going to be on the whole project. Unless you're willing not to do another thing to the project, unless, I don't know.
Even if our credit is coming from fund balance?
I think the, I think the ordinance that historically always said the amount, whether it's coming from different funds or not.
There's a third phase of the architect said, didn't have to be done at any particular time. So we might fund phase one and phase two and worry about the carports down the road.
Any things, I guess.
I think that probably goes to the heart of what the council would ask. I would assume the PBC would have brought oversight of this. And you would typically direct them to be in charge and they would handle, so you're not getting invoices and things coming to you. Similar to the high school project, it's turned over, uh, but you've turned over the high school project. The borrowing happened in four tranches, but forty-seven million, actually the entire eighty-three million was approved. Even though money was coming from the state, the entire amount, uh, the state always does that, because you have to have the ability, if they pull the money to be able to run it.
Both the power and the money, but I think if we left the best components, it's gonna be done at any time of separate item.
And I think at that point, I will confirm with Jeff, but he'd probably say, you would have to send the project to PBC without that. This would be the project.
Right, and then we'd always go back and do that.
Yeah, no, it's just the carports. And even the architect, that could be done anyway.
Yeah.
That's, that's, I don't know. Two, that's, that'd be okay?
Yeah. So you guys. We actually, um, the phasing works out good for us because of the minimal disruption. Locker rooms, uh, get done first phase, the business locker room stay in place. And then, you know, we work from there and we move into the locker room, so.
As long as you guys are okay. So we'll get you some good car rooms.
Yeah. All that space you're gonna have, gee, yeah. Yeah.
Yes, I'm mindful of the soft cross association in this project in relation to the impact of the board of ed location. Other ancillary departments within the town.
Right.
So, we, we have kind of laid it out, a little tip about, about all that, where people can go, what impact would be, but certainly on soft plastic. Making a little shock to us as we incorporate that.
I'm sure, I'm sure we'll be here. We'll have you more. They got the expensive water.
That ends up being the first thing, because in order to do the locker rooms, you've got to clear out the storage space. So the first question is, where does the board, where does that go before the space is available for?
Yeah, there's some logistical planning to get that space right cleared out before they do whatever. Yeah. They, they did do a very general breakdown of soft costs in the orientation, but who knows if that's the whole picture?
The impact of the vault area.
This look great. You can get the building there. But we'll sell. So, just to bring us kind of back around at the beginning, so we got a four point, what, six, seven percent request from the board of ed, right? For increase. Yeah, what, what is the, what is the pound? Increase percentage wise?
So.
It was seventy percent around there? So, which, we, just for the sake of argument, uh, if we let that go forward, that's about a, almost a two million. It's about a four point eight million dollar increase.
Each about a two point three or so.
Uh, one point nine eight, right? Yeah. That's where it stands now with requests. Yeah. Full, full request, whatever, both parties now. So we're, just so we are thinking on those numbers, four point eight. Before any work by the board of finance, council or anybody else, that's just where it stands now, just so we have our, I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Here's the purpose of this meeting, that, you know, so we're going forward, we know where we're at. Got some great discussion, right? Great discussion, great priorities for a lot of us, probably, most of us on the same page with most of the, you know, the H back, the school, the, the public buildings. Obviously, our schools do the best you can for them and the town as well. Yeah, we all want, kind of want the same thing, it's just got to get there somehow.
Yeah, um, question for the ARPA grant.
Yeah.
Do you want to sit on the motion to appropriate the money? Because it will come back to the council first, if anything can be done.
Sit on it. I mean, if we shaved a little bit of that off, it might have been discussion the other night, that there are perhaps a little bit of, uh, different, we got the final.
The final rule is more options.
More options to do it. Uh, I'm saying the bulk of it should go, I think, you know, most of us do it, and it's like, like, the H back, but as we go through the budget, if we, you know, need to, or whatever you guys think.
And maybe, like, to check there, maybe we may be in a better position over the next couple of weeks in terms of what the governor's plan are doing. With that mind, you know, you know, we've got to use the tone out there to the entire state of Connecticut, but we, because I've already made inquiry about it in my office, so.
I would wait a little bit, probably get a little bit further through the process. I think the bulk of that. I think the bulk of it's going.
And even if you approve, I don't think you can afford the summer, right?
No. Well, when would you get?
Yeah, I mean, when was, did you have a start?
Let's say tomorrow, we say, yeah, here we go.
Well, Willard is almost, the big pack is almost ready. Actually, the PBC meeting on Thursday were tested to ninety, ninety-five percent. And so we're, we're also in good shape on all three schools, perhaps applying to that, our program could work ninety percent.
Because it's got to be shovel ready.
Yeah, no, no. I think we're shovel ready at L T schools. They're not just a lot of funding, but really the design has been done. Which is like, packing it, putting it into the big packages, but, um, I think the lead time on seven, the HBAC for the charter is maybe the issue to get, you've got to bid. But I don't know, we'll get the charter by the summer, so, but they could be prepped for it, they can start it. And then, as Doug said, they could do second ship work, but it might triple into the next calendar year.
Have you checked into, know, know, do you want any of that stuff? Is there a way to do that? Because I know that some stuff is just not up there.
The big shout is according on the board of ed, these facilities, some programs, where it's like, go tomorrow. A lot of projects are ordered, three and four, six one two. But the plan, structural, for, for type of, it was, I'm making everything about ceiling. So when the point two show up, with smaller systems or.
But maybe even the betways, they're, they're smaller and more readily available, these days than, you know, from the shelf.
What will tie in this to people's needs, I guess. We're not, we're not selling the stuff. We're not, we're not pressing on pictures.
I think some of it could be sorry about something, yes.
I mean, work towards that goal there to, to get a hundred percent.
I think the PBC wanted to do that, they want to go out to bid, let's practice.
Well, just, let's see if we can get some state.
Yeah, if we can get some state money, you know, trying to.
And, and so while we're talking, start, so the police station, all right, so we do whatever we decide phase one is. When can we start that?
No, that motion is table, right? We have, the PBC is looking for. We have, the PBC was looking to get design, design, the detail design will take about four months.
Okay.
So once the town council go ahead and identifies the funding.
Yeah.
Then the detail design can start. That would be say so, almost three, five months from now, then go to bid, because they'll have a big package to begin with.
Yeah, that's right, I remember that now.
I think this is phase one, phase one is about two point four million dollars. But we split it over two, well, I don't think we do that.
Should we split phase one?
Um.
Or even if we.
You can start until August, September.
The PBC is trying to sign it so you can track it two pistol years, or you do one point seven each pistol year to manage cash flow and help out.
I mean, I did mention to Dye, he said, well, I'm going to put it over three year, that's, you know. Said that.
Yeah, Chris wanted most of it because it's almost putting all of that stuff into the board of ed storage area, which means these guys are still operating, which is great.
Right.
So remove all that stuff from lockroom, we have it processed, we have it processing, um, there's forces of money shut for the, um, training or whatever, the. So that's a big chunk of the work, so.
Use short term notes if it's thrown over here like that, a big thing.
Um, as long as we have the ordinance in place, we absolutely could. But the ordinance is the big thing.
So can we, which I guess the first thing is we have to reach out to council.
Determine whether we have to.
Oh, I forgot some agreement files. Pressed, it's good. This is great.
Yes.
Especially if you have some.
Actually, Brian, let me get the entire package, and actually, you guys want our copies, Willie's repub, so yes, we have the copies. So you guys want our copies, yes, yes. How many? I got the message.
So, and we're, you know, the other, obviously the board of ed budget, you know, we. Stell and I and.
With them afterwards?
Um, you know, they, they voted on that budget, we tried to talk about it before they took that vote. Um, it didn't really get that far, but fortunately, but tried and they understand, you know. Again, they're doing their job, they're doing a good job, Julia, Ryan, but they may love them, they've just break up, so they're doing the best they can. We got to do the best we can with, with, with their budget and uh. Yeah.
We, we left off, we were communicating on progress. That's how we do it.
Yeah, appreciate everybody getting here, giving up another night, like, you know, for the last many nights, so appreciate that. Thank the staff, gee, thank you.
First budget workshops tomorrow night, if anybody would like to.
That's right.
Board of finance will be at.
That's right. Lucky you, so. Here, are you here?
Zoom is an option.
The big crowd.
If you sit there by the G M's.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a good moment.
Bye.